Welcome to the Public Safety Committee meeting. Today is November sixteenth, twenty twenty one is seven oh one. We don't have any minister approve. We don't have any public here, at least you want to say something.
The only thing I want to say is that I'm really pleased with the progress that's happening at South Street and I can't wait for that blinking light to go in. And I really hope that we can start pushing for a real traffic light there, you know?
By the way, it's part of the agenda, we can talk.
Yeah.
So, no, I, yeah, you know what, let's, let's jump to that one to, to, we can leave new business for the last one. Um, I, I do agree with you, I, I think the process in South Main Street is, is going to the right direction and I hope in the future. The OT and the state allocate some funds for installing a traffic lights there because we need it.
Yeah, you know, it's funny, I was, I was thinking this morning when I pulled out of there, they're doing a bunch of work and I, I realized that the traffic coming from Southampton was slowing down a lot recently and it's because there's a bump there. And I was like, maybe that's, that's one of the things that we need to do is put a speed bump as you enter town right there before that intersection.
May, maybe, maybe.
Because it is slowing stuff down, I mean, it's doing it.
We can save some, we can save some money there instead of putting a traffic light. But, but I, I do, I do like it, the process that we were doing there. And looking ahead, what is going to happen next year, all the kids walking there, both the traffic, I think the, the installation of the blinking lights for the crosswalk kids is, at least we've seen progress.
Yep.
Just for the long time, we talked about it and I, I remember they did the survey and everything and nothing happened.
Right.
For the first time in, I mean, you know better than me, especially the, you live near that, my, my daughter lives near there, but we live there. So, we, we're seeing some good progress and I'm really satisfied that Greg from DBW and Jeff are, are, both are on top of it.
Yep, I agree.
And, and they both really care about that intersection and both agree there, we should do, do more as possible for to fix that.
And I also think, I also think that, you know, the property owner of College Highway Variety deserves some acknowledgement for like going along with the plan that, you know, potentially he's going to lose a couple parking spaces, but still like understands that safety is, is a priority. So I appreciate that too.
Definitely in a Rash Patel, they suffer credit for it because I do agree with you, he's losing some parking spots. But we are gaining more safety for the kids and for the community and I think that's, I think he saw the same thing that we're seeing. And that's why he was willing to work with the community and to the city to make that possible. So, I do agree with you. You know, he, he need that. So, um, we have new business.
Yeah.
Ordinance review committees in the final report and they sent two group of ordinance. One, they send it to your committee, the ordinance committee, and the other group was, I mean, they recommend it, the full city council sent it to both committees. And one of the things that I just want to do is just to keep the public safety portion in public safety. And I'm not planning to touch anything in this committee, the other part of the ordinance, because I think you're going to take care of it. So I, I, I don't know if we need to make a motion or not, but, but I just want to keep the public safety portion of the recommendations to work on, on the public safety.
I think it's fine, I don't think we need to necessarily vote on it, I think it's, you know, we can just pull those pieces out, I think we should be good.
Yes, and, and that may more sense, let me share. Sure that. Can you see that?
I sure can.
All right, let me figure that way. So I just copy and paste all the ordinance that they want us to work, I just go in quick, but I'm, that's all of them. I'm going, um, we can go to the first one if, if you want.
Yeah.
And I know you, I probably I know you'd be tired of being in a bunch of, in a bunch of meetings and.
I'm good, I, I say we look at these, I, this is good.
Okay, good. So let's start with the first one is section three seventy six. The recommendation is the city should formalize its current practice around helmet enforcement for youth on bicycles, which prioritizes tie education and connection to helpful resources over the fines and potential impoundment. I'm going to take a look of the ordinance and let's see what they're talking about.
Yeah, so I believe that this is, this is about impounding someone's bike.
Yes.
Um, and they can, they can take somebody's bike until the parent picks it up. Twenty dollars and, and, and I think this is, this is more than just a violation of the helmet, I think it was a violation of any of the bike ordinances, like riding, they used to be like riding with no hands or doing trick or stunt riding. That was one of the things they could confiscate your bike for. But I agree, like, it seems like a twenty dollar fine, like, first of all, number one, nobody's enforcing helmet laws, I mean, I'm seeing little kids riding around in the middle of the street with no helmets on and, and, you know, please, like, and people are driving right by, like, police officers are driving right by, there's no enforcement at this point. So if there's not enforcement, it, it seems like maybe that's because they don't want to give them a fine or they don't want to impound their bike, but, um, you know, maybe. Yeah, go ahead.
And, and this is a question for you because you've been ordinance acting your whole life since you were born. I do have a question, so we should strike the penalties in, in this case and not having any penalty? I do agree with you, I don't think, I don't, probably they don't give it a ticket to anyone.
I don't think they give a ticket to anybody on a bike necessarily.
And, and I do agree with you, it's, who's, who's going to implement that? You saw it every day, I saw it every day, I saw it everywhere, including the party, then some kids are, I mean, we're not encourage people not to wear, not, not to have a helmet.
Right.
That's, that's, that's not the intent of us working on, on taking out the, the penalties of, of, of not using a helmet. We just want to be practical.
You know, you know what, I mean, this would be something that might be worth talking to Bob about because there are some grant programs that supply police departments with helmets for free. And instead of doing a violation, you know, maybe it would make sense if some, if, if, if an officer sees an underage person riding without a helmet on, that they stop them and give them a helmet and show them how to put it on properly. You know, like, instead of having a penalty, you get a gift.
Okay, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take notes of all the recommendations that we are, that we are talking about. I'm going to rewrite the, this section with those recommendations about doing that, like with the grant and if the police instead of giving it a ticket, provide a helmet to the kid, I, I think, I think that's a great idea.
That's good, right? I, I feel like instead of a penalty, it's a, it's a gift. And then, and, and, you know, that could be an interesting, you know, relationship point for, um, you know, for kids to know that, well, you know, the police aren't necessarily going to always give tickets or be angry or mad, you know, maybe they'll help you out, you know?
I do, I, I do agree with you, I, I think that will, that will open the opportunity to, to the police department to create a good relationship with the committee and not, and not be the, 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 the agency, they always doing the ticket or punish people because they're doing something wrong. I think there's, the, the police department should take this opportunity to take, um, to approach the community and, and, and for a learning experience and engage with the community.
Absolutely, that's, that's true community policing right there. Even though I don't know really anything about it, but whatever, we could propose it to Bob and see what he says and.
Is any of these penalties that we should keep or we just rewrite it completely?
I don't think, I, I, you know what, I remember maybe when I was a teenager, seeing the East Hampton Police confiscate someone's bike, I remember that. But I'm probably not since the mid nineties has a bike gotten confiscated from a, a kid riding down the street, I, I would venture to guess. But that's, you know, so I, I don't necessarily think we need to keep any of that, I mean, you know, obviously if we're going to strike all this and, and replace it with something new, we'd probably want to just check in with the police department to see if, if they're, you know, if we're just missing something, you know?
Okay.
Um, but in this one, I'm thinking that we're probably not, I'm thinking they probably haven't done this in a long time.
Sorry, I'm taking notes.
No, that's fine.
All right, I got it. All right, so for the next meeting, we're gonna, I'm going to bring the new language so that way we can strike all the penalties and, and add new language related for the, 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 um, ordinary review committee recommend the basically is being more educational. In connection to help us resource over the finance and potential empowerment. Yeah, I, I, I think that, that is the, the recommendation to eliminate completely. And write something that make more sense for the time that we're living and, and energy to the time they were living is the, the reality of the department. That, you know, the department, that the police department is not doing and, and, um, anything with, with this particular cases because they have all this stuff to do.
Yeah.
And I'm not complaining for the police department, but I don't want anyone to take it the wrong way. And you're saying that they are so busy doing all this stuff in our community, like today, the accident that happens at the main street with the, with the traffic lights, so.
Right, 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 exactly. You know, one, one thing on this that we should just circle back to, maybe put it in the notes is, does this apply to all of the, um, the section, like including bike lights? You know, like one of the, one of the ordinance components was you have to, if you're going to be riding after dusk, you're supposed to have a front light and a rear light, and that to me is like a safety thing, you know, so we might want the, you know, if you're riding in the street, it might make sense for us to keep that requirement and at least have the police be able to say, hey, I mean, there's nothing stopping them from telling, hey, you know, you should really, the ordinance says you need to have a light on the front and back if you're riding on the street after dark. And, but, you know, so that's just something maybe to check in with, like, do we want to, do we want to, like, have some recourse for the officer to be able to, like, have some teeth for that?
And you keep seeing the same thing, right? You don't see the website now?
Uh, no, I just see the, um, the, the document three.
Okay, because I, I'm looking for the, for the ordinance.
Yeah.
First, the three seventy six, and then I will share with you, so.
Because it says violations of this chapter, which makes me think it applies to all of, so it would be like riding on the sidewalk downtown, it would be like not having a light, it would be like riding without a helmet. I, we just rewrote this, maybe, I think we rewrote it in two thousand twelve, maybe, it feels like it was.
Yes, yes.
More recent than that, but.
Yes, I remember Peggy want to add something. All right, three fifty eight breaks, equipment helmets, all right, I gonna share, let me share now.
Now we can be twins.
Yeah. Are, are you seeing that now, right, the article?
Yes, I am, I, I see it, it's brakes and, okay, she'll be equipped with the braking system. So this is just for, this just applies to article four equipment, it doesn't apply to any of the other pieces?
Yes, this is. Because they want us to take a look at three seventy six.
Right, so.
And by the way, you know, and you know what, by the way, because it's in the, I mean, again, I didn't say three seventy six.
Right.
But at the full, now I do have a concern because they only, uh, the package that they sent to us, they only referred to three seventy six. Open media, open, open media law, are we allowed to review or something?
Yeah, 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 uh, it's, it's intent, so the intent was for us to review, um, these pieces, so, yeah, we're good.
Okay.
And there's three seventy six penalties of the whole chapter though, not the section, so what I'm thinking of this chapter.
Yeah, it's the whole chapter.
Um, so what's before the helmet, the equipment piece? Because I feel like that is one piece of this, so we have.
It's just a break.
What's above it?
Before, before the equipment?
Yeah, so reporting of riding bicycle on sidewalks, parking, carrying articles, riding in a group. Interesting. Yeah, okay, so I think violations of this would, violation of these would apply to that twenty dollar fine, too. I think.
But that never happened either.
No, it doesn't happen, yeah, because if you go up, you'll probably see the lights, you'll probably see like, which I'm surprised isn't under equipment, no clinging to vehicles, so you could get, um.
The operators should know where's vehicle, it's a bicycle trailer attached. Am I used for, for the alley and driveway? What is your bicycle over maybe here?
Yeah.
See.
I'm surprised I haven't been pulled over for speed.
Especially with the new, especially with the new ones, huh?
Yeah, yeah, let's see, broken and.
You see, we, we just amended twenty eighteen.
About twenty eighteen, yep, we brought it in line with the mass, the MGL. Let's see.
Otherwise it goes, it passing, you're the person, it should not ever passing you, if I don't necessarily see that. Issue.
Use of both hands, you can't ride no handed.
Yeah, by the way, they don't, they don't see me and my brother riding bikes when we're younger.
Yeah, right.
We bought, but we bought like this one all the time.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so this is article three, operation. Yeah, so I'm thinking, I'm thinking that that probably is applicable to all of these things, so, but at the end of the day, you know, um, I don't think that any of these things are being actively enforced with, like, using tickets, so let's, 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 um, let's check in with Bob and see what he thinks if we, you know, look at like a more community policing approach to dealing with these things, I think that that might make sense.
All right, I will said a meeting with him. And I will bring a new language for the next meeting.
Perfect, yeah, I mean, yeah, that's good.
Yes, because I do agree with you, I, these apply for everything before in that section, in that chapter. Okay, that's fine.
Cool, and so what's the, the, I think then, what's the next one?
Six, six A.
Six A and that.
Is the committee express goes around enforcement. The police department also stated that the current ordinance is outdated, the committee recommend striking these ordinance, six A.
And is that the, um, loitering one, like, under, people under seventeen can't hang out after ten P M?
I think is that one, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if the police are fine with striking it, I'm, I'm, I say, let's strike it.
I'm pretty sure the officer Gribby, I think was it, or another officer show up to these meetings and probably one of them recommended, like, you know what, strike it, we're never going to do it or.
Right, yeah, and it's like, it's kind of weird how it's, how it's worded by certain minors, you know, like, oh, yeah, we, by those certain minors.
And that's why seventeen, not sixteen. I think, I think that was a conversation of the ordinance review committee was, uh, why seventeen or why no eighteen or why no fifteen?
Right, 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 right. Because Gomez and Derby might be out there after ten o'clock or loitering.
And not just that, as, uh, you know, more and more, you, you, you'll see kids that are sixteen years old. Uh, they, they work, probably they're getting, getting out together, work and, uh.
Yeah, walk home on the bike path or something.
At, at ten P M, I, I think there's, uh, another opportunity for the, for the police department, just, just. Plus, we don't have that problem either, so.
We don't, and, and I, I think, I think this is one of those ones that we're completely within our.
And the other thing.
It's nineteen sixty five, yeah, let's, let's strike this one, this one is, um, I think this one's good to say goodbye to. And so the next one is this discharging dangerous weapons, how come they have, what's, what's the problem with that one?
So before moving to the next one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Um, so I will, I will take a motion to strike that.
Yeah, I moved, I moved to strike section six point eight, loitering by certain minors during certain hours.
Second, so we have a motion on the second, console derby.
Yes.
And I say, I, so we strike six A. Motion passes, oh, this is, this is out two to zero. Is section. All right, uh, that was the next one is six nineteen, the police department note the section six nine is also, is also outdated. And the matter is now covered by legislation surrounding hunting licenses.
Okay, so I'll move to strike section six dash nine, discharging dangerous weapons.
Second, uh, yeah, second, we have a motion on the second, because there'll be.
Aye.
And I say, I, motion passes.
Yeah, because I think that that is probably covered by a bunch of different laws, uh, people under sixteen, I mean, people over sixteen, discharging firearms is against the law, so in, within five hundred feet of a house, so we're, we're okay on this one, so.
Making note for tomorrow too.
Yeah.
Strike. Say six fifteen.
Interesting.
All right, the recommendation said, the police department note that the list of ordinance subject, subject to non criminal this posi, this position is not a ex- exhaustive list and should be updated, so they should be outdated.
Okay.
They also noted that the city fines for violating the handicap parking ordinance is fifty dollars as opposed to five hundred dollar state fee.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so we need to just update.
Six fifteen, right, they said. The nature will be fixed by ordinance, however, the, the casual, so I need to read the, let me see, what is? Section six. What is the chapter?
I, I feel like I just, I don't know, swimming in the nude, what the?
Miscellaneous provision, miscellaneous offense and provisions. Six nineteen is.
Did they want us to look?
I mean, six fifteen.
Yeah.
No criminal rate for misordinance, hmm. I don't know, maybe it's someone that I, that I will should keep it there until Lindsay.
Yeah, let's, I think we should, we should keep this one, uh, because it sounds like it might just need to be, we might need to update the, the MGL uh, in the section and then maybe have a more exhaustive list. So it will go down a little bit, under C, what does that say, under C, just like where to go? Um, city clerk, Hampton district, cool. So, yeah.
Yes, the thing is the recommendation they, they put in here. Kind of, I, I will reach Lindsay to see if we can get the minutes from the meeting.
Okay.
And to understand.
She might know what they're talking about on this one, because.
Yeah, yeah, probably.
We have, we have to keep, this isn't one we can't, we can strike because if we strike this, we can't do any non criminal ticketing in the city. It's like, this is, this is.
That's why.
Yeah.
Or look like we should add more stuff, that's what the recommendation should set. But the question is what stuff we should.
Right, and we're, because it doesn't look like we have anything, like, there's no ordinances listed under here.
No, and then they.
Oh wait, hold on, hold on, what, under D, it says the following ordinances to be included within the scope of this. Uh, and the specific shall apply further the rules and regulations. Doesn't, there's no, the following ordinances are to be included within the scope of this article and the specific penalties listed here shall apply in such cases. So if you go down, does it, is there a list of ordinances?
That's what I'm going to look.
Ah, here it is, here it is, this is what needs updated right here.
Yes, probably this is what they need to, that we need to update it.
Yeah, so, and this is, we'll probably, we'll probably want to, um, coordinate with.
And they mentioned this one.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll want to coordinate with the police department and, or maybe they have a written recommendation for what these need to be updated to, but we'll need to see what, you know, and talk about what those updates are, are.
Because we can increase up to five hundred, right?
Yeah, uh, three hundred, three hundred.
Three hundred, three hundred, yeah, so that's why probably they say, you know what, by state is five hundred, we have a fifty, so we should, we should put three hundred instead of five hundred. And by the way, i- if we do a five hundred, uh, three hundred is less than the state.
So that's what I'm saying, yeah, yeah.
All right, we got that, I will contact the police department so that we're, they can give us a better number for this penalties, all of them.
Yeah, like, so, and like, I can see right now, one of these that would need to be updated is not just sale tobacco, but any sale of nicotine, so you'd want like vaping products. Like those types of things aren't included, um, because that's technically not tobacco.
Yes, and that was in nineteen ninety four.
The vapes didn't exist then.
Maybe, yeah, they didn't have vape.
Yeah.
Vape ten.
No.
And we could obey that, but we don't know what, what was going to happen in, in twenty forty, so maybe we have, they have to update it.
I'll have to update it then too, yeah.
Section A four five.
That yawn was not an uninterested yawn, I'm just.
No, don't worry.
Been a long day.
A four.
I'm just tired, oh, standing in groups.
Yeah, okay, and I remember this one because I was one of them, or whatever, when we start talking about it.
Yeah.
So, um, the concern about, uh, the commit from the order, the review committee is concerns that this could be enforced with bias. These two are also redundant and could become, could be combined revise, uh, review and revise.
Yeah, and, and another thing that this is, you know, this could potentially be, you know, a constitutional violation because if someone, if people are protesting, they could stand in groups. And if we have an ordinance, that, that could be limiting free speech. So, they said that, that we should update it, or, I mean, it almost seems like this is kind of thing, it could be struck.
Yes, is review and revise, um, three or more people, we should not continue to stand on each other. And, and I tried to find the logic behind it too.
Yeah.
Because again, if I'm with four or five people in a sidewalk, uh, protesting, I'm the right, that's probably way.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm allowed to be there. And I'm I'm allowed to be there doing a protest, so.
So I think maybe we'll, let's put a pin in this one. We might need to.
To talk to the lawyer.
Just follow up and talk to the lawyer and and, you know, talk to. Yeah.
Of course, now my pen doesn't want to work.
I love this one, throwing throwing or shooting missiles upon public ways. Then s- snowball is, is snowball is a uh is a missile. That's pretty sweet.
It is?
Yeah, stones, snowballs, sticks or other missiles.
Yeah, they don't say that we should talk shit, but that was in nineteen forty five.
Yeah, I mean, it's good. I guess you don't want people out in the streets throwing snowballs at your car, but.
True.
Well, you gotta close your cellar door too.
You have to, come on. The other one is chapter eight, article three, division two. Article three.
Division two, snow and ice removal.
Okay, this is. All right, and I think probably. I will invite the commissioner. Of the ability share woman to come and talk to us about it. Before we we take any actions, but um I I'm pretty sure it's coming from them, from them. Okay, if you have a disabled, uh, a disabled owner. Uh, in a house, they have a sidewalk in front of their houses and they're not allowed to. By, you know, health condition to do it. So that we're gonna implement it there, so it's it's. I think it's a it's a conversation that we should have with them.
Yeah, and cause it also goes the other way too. You know, it's like if you're, if you have, uh. The need for a wheelchair and you're trying to go down the street and someone hasn't plowed their or someone hasn't shoveled, then that's good, that's another. So it's like, it's it's a double, it's kind of a double edge on this one. You know, one of the things that we, can you go down and see when we updated this? But I think that we put in something about the D B T, D P W. Down, yeah, right there. Uh, yeah, I think it was in uh in two thousand and six, we added the cost of a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for labor materials. For the city to clear.
Okay, because if you see they have to do it, the the um. The household owner have to pay for that.
Yeah.
The cost of a hundred fifty hour war.
Because what, because at that point, we, you know, we had like, uh, you know, absentee landlords that would just let the snow sit and we're like, we want to be able to get that cleared off.
Of of course, because I I I remember, um, maybe a year ago, no more than a year, maybe a couple of years ago. When this committee sent a letter to the superintendent, because we have that concern, there are a lot of people, uh, they didn't plow the snow from the. For the sidewalk and uh they didn't delay the school hours, so the kids have to go through the street. And that was a huge concern that we had that day, I remember.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that. This is a good one. This is a big one that we'll we'll need to come back to.
Yes, I think we should keep it. And that and that's it. I don't have anything from the, from, um. From the order review committee, but I think we we do part of it and I have a homework to do. Yeah, that was good. I don't have. Anything else, I will probably, I will do. I will send a text to set up the next meeting. That way we can coordinate altogether, um, when it's gonna be the best day.
Sounds good to me.
For us to to have the next meeting. All right. I will second that, um, uh, console Derby. And I say I.